Commission if you'd like.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Ballard?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Lawler?
Here.
Mr. Sneed?
Here.
And Mr. Hill.
Here. We have six.
Uh, Mr. Taylor, I'm sorry, I skipped Mr. Taylor.
Okay.
I'm here.
Okay, we have seven.
We have seven, okay. Um, we'll go ahead and do score sheet and summary from July thirteenth. We need a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion. Phil Ballard.
Second, Elliot, second.
Discussion. See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it seven zero. Uh, planning commission status sheet. Need a motion to accept.
Elliot, motion to accept.
Sneed second it.
Discussion. See no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Eyes have it seven zero. No committee reports, Gil?
Correct.
Okay, then we'll go to the first item, which is zone nine dash twenty, Gamma Tree Service.
Hello, everyone. Uh, this is Doug May. Um, I'll be presenting, uh, the first item on the agenda. Um, so this is a request to rezone from R three, uh, to C eight planned commercial district. It's about a three and a half acre site, uh, located on the east side of BP Road, approximately two hundred and eighty feet north of Portilock and Drive. Uh, you can kind of see it, um, in the location map there, um, in, in west St. Louis County. Um, and then here on the right, it's the site that's outlined in red. Um, so just a little bit of background information, this is originally zoned R three in nineteen sixty-five with the adoption of the surrounding land uses are mostly residential with a few neighborhood oriented commercial uses. Over the years, there were several rezonings, um, that resulted in commercial shopping centers and an office park, and then some multifamily developments, uh, to the west. Um, in nineteen seventy-three, the subject site received a CUP for a, um, excuse me, for a Southwestern Bell Telephone Service, uh, and, uh, vehicle terminal, which occupied the site a little recently. Um, this is the site plan for the site and the proposed use, um, which the site is, uh, proposed to stay just about the same. It's very well screened, um, currently on all sides or buffered with landscaping. Um, it also sits lower than adjacent land uses, um, to negate impact on, on surrounding uses. Um, so the petition's request is a change in zoning from R three to C eight planned commercial district, uh, for an office warehouse, including a landscape contractor's facility. Um, the petitioner proposes to reuse the existing structure, um, which is here, site plan, that's like a long skinny building. Um, no new landscaping is proposed. Like I said, it's already currently very well screened and buffered from all the entrances surrounding it. Uh, there's no, there would be no overnight storage on the site. Um, it's proposed, uh, or the, the petitioner has indicated that there may be some loose vegetative debris stored on the site during the day, but not, not overnight. Um, the petitioner indicated that the hours of operation would be Monday through Friday, um, six AM to eight PM, I think, um, with occasional work on, on Saturdays. Um, our planning, uh, planning department is recommending approval on this petition. Um, although the site is owned residential, the site has been utilized as a low intensity commercially used for decades, um, and this would just continue that type of use. Um, the site is well screened and buffered from adjoining properties, and like I mentioned, there are no, um, changes proposed to the site. The, the physical, um, current state of the site would remain the same.
Okay, uh, we need a motion? Anyone?
I make a motion, Cunningham.
Taylor, second the motion. Discussion, anyone?
Yes, I have a question. What if they want to utilize it for something different? Would it have to come back before the board? A planning commission?
Yes, so this request is for this specific use, so if they wanted to do something different, it would have to be a new amendment to the CA.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, we have a motion to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We have a, a nay? Or is everybody in favor? Were those all seven?
I don't know.
Sound like it.
Okay. Then we'll go on to PC ten dash twenty, moto.
So this is a request for a change in zoning from, excuse me, the M one, the FPM one, FPM three NU and FPM U to M three planned industrial district and FPM three in planned industrial district for a nearly eleven acre site, uh, in the southeast quadrant of Interstate two fifty-five and Coke Road. Um, we are recommending denial of this, uh, request. The petitioner is requesting, uh, the proposed use of a convenience store with eight gas pumps, fourteen truck parking spaces and eight truck fueling spaces, as well as a fast food restaurant with a drive-through. Uh, the staff's recommendation, oh, here's the site plan, as you can see, uh, the convenience store is in roughly the middle of the site. Uh, we are recommending denial based on the appropriateness of the proposed use in site plan and the request for the M three planned industrial district procedure. Uh, site has been zoned M one and FPM one since the adoption of the zoning ordinance in nineteen sixty-five and received that designation due to the existence of, uh, a few large storage tanks on the site. Uh, those have since been removed and the site has not been occupied by an industrial use in nearly two decades. Um, additionally, the site is part of the Sixth County Council District Community Area Study, which is a blueprint for, um, development in South County, specifically the Sixth Council District. And this site is located, um, in two of the areas mentioned in the plan, the Coke Hospital Site and then the general area south of Jefferson Barracks Bridge. Um, the staff would note that the uses permitted are not permitted by right in the M one. A filling station and a restaurant would be considered conditional uses in the M one district. And a convenience store would be considered a commercial use that would not be permitted in the M districts by right. While the M three planned industrial district procedure can accommodate, uh, related commercial uses with industrial uses, uh, for all intents and purposes, this auto, uh, and truck service station, convenience store, um, is a commercial use. That being said, staff does not feel it would be appropriate to introduce, um, this sort of activity level at this interchange. Uh, we would note that this Coke Road exit does serve institutional uses to the north, such as the, the VA Medical Center and a couple, uh, school and early child, uh, early childhood center. Uh, additionally, we feel that Telegraph Road has been planned and developed as a commercialized corridor in this area and is located one exit to the west. And that has been, you know, planned and developed in that way deliberately. Further, this, this proposal is not in keeping with the Sixth District Community Area Study, um, which recommends institutional, residential, or, uh, recreational uses on the site. And we also feel that the proposal is not aesthetically or visually appealing at this gateway into the county of Mississippi River. So for these reasons, staff is recommending denial of this request.
Okay.
This is.
We need a motion?
Elliot, denial.
And Sneed second it for the purposes stated.
Uh, discussion, anyone?
Yeah, a question. Wayne, this is Keith. What does the, uh, county recommend for?
So.
I'm just wondering.
So we would, you know, recommend any of the uses that were recommended in the study, which would be institutional uses or maybe office uses that could take advantage of the river overlook as well as the access to the interstate. Um, all of the M one uses would be permitted, uh, on this site. And, you know, it hasn't sustained a, an M one permitted use in twenty years. Um, so that is the existing zoning, but we would, I suppose, recommend something as recommended in the plan.
Would a, would a sit-down rep be approvable?
So that would be a conditional use and would still be subject, you know, to a, a, a recommendation of approval by this commission.
Which, it would require a public hearing.
Yeah, right.
Maybe I missed it. What's a, I'm sorry, Keith, are you finished?
Yes.
Uh, what's, uh, MF residential?
Oh, multiple family.
Okay, alright, this will make sure.
Steve Lawler.
Go ahead, Steve.
Uh, yeah, I took a ride down through there and the roads that come into that, I can't imagine semi-trucks coming that way. If you go south from that, on that road, you go down to a big, um, uh, place where they're hauling rock and everything else out of
Yeah.
a quarry down there. So, to me, the, the traffic that'll be go, going through there, um, with the trucks and everything else, I don't think it would be safe for automobiles, and I, I would do not recommend accepting this.
Okay, anyone else? Yeah, the end of that road is busting quarries, which is quite active.
Right.
Uh, and for those who want to know, I did ride my bicycle across that bridge at age thirteen.
You gonna tell us?
I'm not gonna tell you. I mean, here's that one.
Hey, hey, wait a minute, wait a minute, Wayne, that was the other bridge.
What's that?
I missed whatever you said, Wayne, I didn't hear.
I'm, I'm not gonna repeat. Okay, see no, no one else? All those in favor of denial?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Seeing none, eyes have it, and we'll go on to the next, uh, petition, thirteen dash twenty, Eduardo Reyes. Graboy.
We'll actually start with eleven dash twenty. And then be twelve and thirteen, if it pleases you, Wayne.
Yeah, eleven twenty.
Okay, um, so the next three are, are very similar, um, requests, um, so we'll go through these. Uh, first one is Eduardo Reyes, uh, Telegraph. The request is a CUP in the C two shopping district and FPC two. It's about a six and a half acre site on the east side of Telegraph, approximately three hundred and sixty feet south of Golden Valley Drive. Um, you can see it in the location map with the red dot. It's in, uh, Oakville area of South County, and the site is outlined in red there on the, uh, east side of Telegraph. It was originally zoned, uh, R four in nineteen sixty-five. Uh, the surrounding land uses were mostly residential at that's, at that time, but as Telegraph Road continued to increase in traffic volume, and several properties were rezoned to commercial along, along Telegraph, um, but residential uses continued behind those commercial uses. Um, in nineteen sixty-five, the subject site was rezoned from R four and FPR four to C two and FPC two, um, and was developed into a retail center that occupies the site to this day. Um, in two thousand and eleven, the northeast port, part of the site was, I received a CUP and was redeveloped with a Dunkin' Donuts, which is still there to this day. Um, this is the preliminary site plan that was, that was, um, submitted to us. Uh, we requested some revisions that increased the number of stacking spaces for the ATM, but most of the other elements are staying the same. So this is the first one, and then this is the revised site plan that shows one more stacking space. Um, so north is to the right, on the right side of the plan, um, and so cars would be traveling northbound and they'd have to access it to the left there. Um, and then they'd exit again, uh, to the north and they'd kind of maneuver through the parking lot to get back out. Um, the, so the request is for a conditional use in the C two shopping district. The proposed use is a freestanding, um, ATM. It removes nine parking spaces as a ten-foot tall canopy. It's internally lit, um, identifying ATM on the entry side, two stacking spaces, I should say Telegraph Road, um, and accessible twenty-four seven, and they average ten transactions per hour, um, according to the applicant. Uh, we're recommending approval, um, on this. The ATM is reasonable at this location. It's a relatively low intensity and it's, um, in the middle of a existing shopping center, so it wouldn't impact, um, surrounding residential properties, and it wouldn't reduce the number of required parking spaces, um, needed for the shopping center, um, and we're presenting this to you as a letter of recommendation.
Okay, uh, do we have a motion?
Taylor, make a motion for.
Second?
Elliot, second.
Discussion? See no one, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Eyes have it seven zero, and we'll go on to twelve dash twenty.
Look, this is also a request for a conditional use permit in the C two for a five-point-six-three acre site located on the south, in the southeast quadrant of Bell Fountain Road and Laramore Parkway Drive in North County, just north of, um, Interstate two seventy. Um, the petitioner is requesting a conditional use permit for a freestanding ATM, um, not associated with a bank on site. Um, similar to the other requests, they are removing roughly nine parking spaces to accommodate the ATM, the drive aisle to access it, and the canopy that would cover the ATM. Um, this is the plan that was submitted with the application. Subsequent to public hearing, uh, staff spoke with the petitioner about moving the ATM further south away from the northern access point on Bell Fountain Road for the retail plaza. So this revised plan shows it moved south, uh, uh, twenty-five feet or so to increase the distance there. Um, staff is recommending approval. We feel that the proposed use is reasonable at this location. Uh, this retail plaza was developed as an auto-oriented, um, retail facility and has been so for roughly fifty years. Uh, we feel that the, the proposed use can be accommodated, um, without reducing, it, it can be accommodated without reducing the parking below the requirement, and the ATM is located in a, a maybe, yes, less utilized part of the parking area. Uh, the site is surrounded by auto-oriented retail and commercial uses and has frontage on a pretty busy arterial, arterial road in Bell Fountain Road. Uh, for those reasons, staff is recommending approval, uh, subject to the conditions and see, and this is brought to you as a letter of recommend.
Okay, uh, we need a motion?
I make a motion for approval, and, uh, the reason I'm doing it, I think that's a good suggestion, you guys, to have to move that thing back because coming off that street, uh, as you go past Nooks, that road narrows to, it's a two-way, then it narrows to a one-way, you have to get up there by those apartments. That's a good move, so therefore I recommend approval for that.
Okay, do we have a second?
Elliot, second.
Discussion? See none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it seven zero, and we'll go on to, uh, thirteen dash twenty.
Okay, this is a very similar request, um, about a half acre site in the southeast quadrant of Graboy Road and Tesson Berry Road. Um, it's located in that apton area of South County. Um, you can see it in red there with the corner of Graboy and Tesson Berry. Um, so the majority of this area was zoned C two shopping district in nineteen sixty-five. Surrounding properties contain auto-oriented commercial uses, commonly found real roads. Property to the south is rezoned R six, uh, nineteen eighty-two to allow multifamily housing. Um, subject site received a CUP in nineteen eighty-four for a service station and food store. Um, that service station has since been turned into a, uh, a retail store for Verizon Wireless. Um, this was the first site plan, uh, presented or submitted to the planning department. Um, it shows the, um, the ATM located in this, uh, outlined area in this, um, in this inset map and I've had an angle at the corner there of those two roads. Um, we requested a revision that pulled the ATM further into the site to allow easier ingress and egress in and out of the site. Um, so that motorists didn't have to make quite as sharp of a turn to get in and out. Um, so this is the revised site plan showing it located a little bit further into the site. Um, and as you can see, it doesn't replace any, um, striped parking, um, so it doesn't decrease the number of parking spaces, um, on the site. Um, so the request is a C two or a conditional use in the C two shopping district, um, for a freestanding ATM. Uh, like I said, it doesn't replace any striped parking spaces, um, ten-foot tall canopy covering the ATM, internally lit sign, um, two stacking, stacking spaces, um, north of the ATM along the Graboy Road frontage. Accessible twenty-four seven, averaging ten, ten transactions per hour. Uh, we are recommending approval. We feel, we feel the ATM is reasonable at this location. Um, site has been an audio-oriented retail facility for several decades, and this is a sort of a natural, um, addition to that use. Um, and the use can be altered without replacing any of the existing striped parking spaces. Um, and so we are recommending approval and presenting this as well as a, uh, also as a, um, letter of recommendation.
Okay, we need a motion? Make a motion for approval.
Cunningham, second.
Discussion? Seeing no, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it seven zero? Evident. That was seven zero, right?
Who was the no vote, please?
Who's the no vote?
That was Lawler, and I've changed my mind.
Oh. So, so is it all yes votes, seven to nothing? It, it. Steve, is that a yes vote then? Was that a yes vote? Mr. Lawler?
Yes, I'm, I'm having a hard time hearing this.
Okay.
What was your question?
Well, did you vote yes on this most recent request for a conditional use permit for the ATM at Graboy and Tesson Berry?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So we're seven zero. And we'll go on to, uh, correspondence item, which is PC seventy-three dash ninety-eight.
First correspondence is, uh, PC seventy-three ninety-seven. That is a, uh, Southwestern Bell Wireless Systems Inc., this is a conditional use permit in the C two. It's south of Graboy Road, west of Emil Drive. The, basically, the tower is permitted at a hundred and fifty feet. However, sometimes since, uh, sometime, the, and there were antenna and occurrences have added to the tower that exceeded that hundred and fifty feet, up to about a hundred and fifty-eight feet. At this point in time, Crown Castle is making some improvements to some of the existing antenna, and this was brought to the attention of the county. So this request is, will not increase the overall height of the tower. It will only make provision for the existing antenna and other occurrences to not exceed a hundred and fifty-eight feet. We are recommending approval of this, um, change, which really is just to correct the existing conditions. As you see, the tower did not, height did not change. It's, and this was, and it evidently was built this way and wasn't caught at the time.
Okay. Uh, do we have a motion on this?
I'll make a motion for approval, just Sneed.
Elliot, second.
This, discussion, anyone? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it seven zero, and we'll go to the next correspondence item, which is, uh, PC seventy-nine dash eighty-two HA and DB Cross, Cross Oil Company.
Yeah, and this is, uh, this site is located at the, uh, southeast corner of Lusher Road and Redmond Road, um, in North County. Um, you can see it there in the, in the map and outlined in red. Um, so the original request for the site was a change in zoning from C four to C eight to establish a self-service gas station and convenience store. Um, the C eight was amended several times over the years, um, to include a oil change facility to decrease the setback from ten to, ten feet to five feet for parking on the east side, um, to revert the permitted uses back to the original permitted uses, and then finally to allow out, or to clarify the alcohol sales on the site in the permitted uses. Uh, the current request is to amend the building requirement, um, of the original C eight to allow for the construction of a new five thousand square foot convenience store building. The way the conditions read today, it, it says the existing building must be utilized for a convenience store. However, the original building has since been demolished, so there is, the site is completely vacant. So, so we're amending the C eight to, to allow for a new building to be built. Um, and also, uh, to allow for masonry brick finish, um, made out of, uh, cyber, or fiber cement panels in lieu of brick or brick facade. Um, this was, has a brick-like appearance, but it isn't actually brick. Interesting to use this material. Um, so this is the site plan of this, of the proposed site, um, at the corner there with the, um, convenience store building located in the southeast portion of the site, um, and then access on to Lusher and Redmond Road. This is the, uh, elevations of the site, excuse me, showing the fiber cement panels that look like brick. Um, and we are recommending approval on this, um, on this item.
Okay, we need a motion?
Elliot, motion for approval.
Do we have a second?
Cunningham, second.
Question. Yes, Wayne, question? Yes, go ahead. Who's the owner of this station? Hmm.
It's in your letter on the
Doesn't seem that they indicated specifically who would be the operator.
So how, how do they come up with? And, and the materials if there's no operator?
The, the correspondence came in from the architect. Um, they've been developing the plans. The site is zoned C eight for these specific uses. It, it didn't really met, the petitioner back in eighty-two was cross oil, but it has, uh, changed ownership over the years, so the zoning stays with the property.
Used to be a circle station there, wasn't it, Gil, one time?
Right, right. That's what the zoning authorizes, a gas station with a convenience store. And the conditions were written such that the convenience store was supposed to hit the existing building. It was back when they kind of were transforming kind of outdated, uh, service stations and getting rid of the bays and, and, um, transitioning more to convenience store. And so it was modified in nineteen eighty-two, but, um, now they're just wanting to do the convenience store, but the, the specific conditions on this site said they had to use the existing building, and in this case, as you can see, there is no existing building. So we're just trying to clarify the ordinance that, um, that a, a new building could be authorized.
Gil?
Yes.
Uh, uh, I have a question, Sneed.
Yes.
I have a question about, uh, uh, this one, uh, being moved forward without a public hearing because there's not an existing building, uh, at, at this time. Would that be appropriate to do that?
Um, well, you certainly could. The, the property is currently zoned commercial for a service station with a convenience store. Um, and it dates back to nineteen eighty-two, so if, in fact, um, you thought that the neighborhood should, uh, benefit from a public hearing, uh, that, that could be your motion that, you know, it's been eighteen, twenty, thirty years since, uh, you know, you originally took a look at this. Uh, conditions have changed or whatever that you want to modify. You just want to hold a hearing to let the public be able to comment.
That, that's, uh, that's my major concern is that the public, um, don't see a building, and then all of a sudden they see a building. Haven't had the opportunity to comment.
Bill, there's a quick trip. The old quick trip used to be across the street. They moved it down the street up to Parker Road. And right behind it, they have a, uh, used to be the old Regions Bank, and no one is in either one of those places.
So all four quadrants are zoned commercial. I don't think the issue is commercial, but what your, what your issue is, the fact that, um, you know, there, there's not a building there that's just being replaced.
Right, and it hasn't been there for a long time, right?
Right, it's been years since it's been there, and plus, uh, you know, I like to see something up there because they got a lot of eighteen-wheelers parking up there again.
Right, so, but, Bill, the sense that you would have is that, uh, uh, we probably we probably don't need a public hearing for this?
No, I think it'd be okay, you know, I, I don't have a problem with that.
I just think it affords the opportunity for people to comment. And, and then, uh, we go from there, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, they would probably be glad to, you know, have them come in and tell them what they're gonna do because people, I hear people saying they would like to see something there. All the 18-wheelers and, uh, these big old toy and trucks, uh, that park their, their trucks up there. Especially since QuickTrip, uh, moved up the street. Yeah, but see what QuickTrip did after they did, after they moved, they put those big old concrete, uh, blocks in there so people can't park over there. Right. And one time, Mr. Otto and I complained about the, uh, car wash across the street. They used to park up there all the time. Gil, you recall those conversations? We used to call and say, hey, can we get somebody to take a look at that?
Yes, I do. Yes, I do. At minimum, this would be, the earliest we could have a public hearing on this would be October because we have already scheduled the September public hearing. And this obviously will be news to this, um, this owner of the property, uh, that, you know, they may have thought that they had development rights, but again, that ordinance is very specific. It says they have to use an existing building and there is no such thing there.
Right.
So we can modify this, uh, correspondence to instead.
Well, I'd say, I'd say let's just, uh, I'll make a motion to that and see if, uh,
Well, we have a motion on the floor.
Or disagrees with that.
Yeah, right now we have a motion. That's right. We have a motion and a second on the floor to, uh, approve the, the staff recommendation. So.
Okay.
Take it away, Wayne.
Would the first and second elect to amend their motion? To make it a public hearing? Require a public hearing on this?
Sure, I, I seconded it, uh, Cunningham, and I, I can amend it, yeah, no problem.
Yeah, I made the motion, Elliot, I can amend it.
You're okay with that too, the, okay. Uh, so the motion's been amended to ask for a public hearing. Any other comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it seven zero. And we'll go on to, uh, the last correspondence item, which is, uh, PC thirteen dash ninety-seven, AT&amp;T Wireless.
This is a condition, a conditional use permit in the KP Cars Preservation District. This is located north of Highway, uh, sixty-seven on the north side of Krensky Lane, west of New Jamestown Road. This, uh, conditional use permit also permits a telecommunications tower. This telecommunications tower is limited to 140 feet in height. And similar to the last one, sometime in the last 20 some years, some antenna and other appurtenances, appurtenances were, uh, replaced on this tower that extend the overall height to 146. And once again, Crown Castle is making some improvements, uh, replacing some existing antenna on the tower, not mess, not the top antenna, just some antenna. And, um, we are asking that the conditional use permit be amended to allow the antenna and other appurtenances to, to not exceed 146 feet. The tower will not be, the cha, the tower itself will not change. It's just, this is to allow the appertain, appurtenances to be, uh, to be legally on the tower. We are recommending approval of this CUP amendment as well.
I make a motion for approval, Taylor.
Elliot, second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Ayes have it seven zero. We have no, uh.
We have one site plan.
Oh, we have one site plan, okay. Go ahead.
So this is the, uh, the site development plan and elevations for the proposed U-Haul, um, up on, at Dunn Road and West Florissant Avenue. Uh, was previously a venture store and previously a Kmart. Um, as you may recall, they want to maintain the existing building, which is outlined here in red. But they are making some changes to the, uh, their proposing vehicle display along the West Florissant frontage to, uh, freestanding mini storage, uh, self-storage buildings and then rearranging the parking a little bit. And then some elevations here. They're, you know, doing some improvements to the facade, the facade. Um, some of the U-Haul stuff, we've come to expect the same sort of colors. Um, these, uh, windows would really be their, uh, their facades as well to kind of show what the inside would look like. Um, this is the side of the main building. And then these would be the, uh, mini, mini warehouses, uh, at the, towards the entrance. Um, so we are recommending approval of this site plan and these elevations.
Okay, we need a motion?
In honor of Lawler, I make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second emotion, Taylor.
Discussion?
What you're saying there, this is Bill, what you're saying, they want to park more of their trucks up there for advertisement on the West Florissant side?
So these would be, on the West Florissant side would be, you know, the, uh, trucks and trailers available to rent. We, uh, wrote the ordinance to allow them to display those vehicles, uh, along West Florissant. So there are, uh, I think about 20. And then we are requesting, you know, we are requiring landscaped, uh, rain garden style islands in the midst of those as well. So that is the West Florissant frontage.
So aesthetically, it's not gonna look horrible, is what you're saying?
It'll be their good, it would be their good stuff.
Okay.
The good vehicles for rent.
Okay, anyone else? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it seven zero. And that's it, correct?
That's all we've got.
Okay, we need a motion to adjourn.
Elliot, motion to adjourn.
Taylor, second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
None, we are adjourned.
Okay, everybody, we'll see you back on Monday, September 14th at 7 o'clock for a public hearing.
Okay, have a good one.
Have a great Labor Day weekend.